Good evening and welcome to the city council regular meeting. Call the meeting to order. Roll call please.
Mayor Garrett.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor, Councilmember Jennings.
Present.
Councilmember Canes.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Madam Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you. I'm invite everyone that's on Zoom and in the audience to say the pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Um, before we approve the agenda, I want to add to the regular agenda. Then you get to talk about it in this study session. No, it was this one. I was saying this here for that. Do you want to add the police department report, the Lathir Boulevard six ninety-six crossover? And if we could add that to be, was that?
We don't want to vote on this.
We can talk about it down the.
Okay, sorry. Oh, so then we know. Okay, no problem.
Did you want to potentially move that up in the budget so that Lieutenant Zhang?
Then I will take the approval for motions to approve the budget. I mean, the agenda, sorry, sorry, sorry. It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none.
When do we table?
When we get to that. Any further discussion? Roll call please.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Canes. Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Motion carried to approve the agenda.
Thank you. Um, I'm assuming there's no presentation. No zoning, zoning board of appeals. So now. If there's public comment for items that's on the agenda. And I had one, I think we all had one that um, that was emailed to us. So is there anyone that's here? That would like to be heard for anything that's on the. But I can't get budget out my mouth. I mean, out my mind, anything that's on the agenda that you'd like to speak about. You got it.
My next red. Turning raises, knowing no inflation affecting the city employees, but I remind the council it is affecting all of the city taxpayers.
Thank you. Was there anyone else? Um, I did get something from, we all got something from Carol Green. Due to previous commitment, I am unable to attend tonight's meeting. Please be advised that I am vehemently opposed to the city providing lifelong healthcare insurance to any city employee. While such benefits may be earned, I cannot support such an expenditure for our city. Thank you, Carol Green. Is there anyone else? Any, anyone on? What is this called? Because I keep wanting to say is budget. Zoom. Raise your hand. So but there's really only one person, but I see. Okay, never mind. Okay, well then I will close the public comment. And we'll go to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
There a second? It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Yes, there's none.
Like to pull G.
Okay.
I told my agenda. Oh, that's my emotion.
Yeah.
Second data motion.
Yeah. We're, we're.
I will amend my motion to approve the consent agenda minus item G.
Thank you. Is there a second? Would you like the second again too? Roll call please.
I'm sorry.
Bar of a second.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yeah.
Councilmember Canes.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Going to um, item G.
Um, I did submit some questions to Susan Montenegro earlier and got some answers and there's a few things that I'm still waiting on, but. Um, I just wanted to go through the budget and share some information with um, the community on what some of the things are because we, you know, we pass a. Payments of a lot of money every month and um, I think, you know, people need to know some of the things we're spending it on. Um, I have asked for um, statements and backup information for uh, credit card payments that were made in the amount of. A total of six thousand one hundred thirty-one dollars and seventeen cents. Um, there was a charge of a two hundred nine dollars and eight cents for travel expense. Um, for our deputy treasurer and that was because she attended the Michigan Municipal Treasurers Association Con- Conference in Mount Pleasant and that was for her mileage. Um, then there was a reimbursement for lunch for crew members, forty-four dollars and twenty cents. That was lunch for a crew working the hazmat drop off collection event. I'm sure several people particip- participated in that. Um, I asked for a breakdown of um. Work uh, by, by cliff or rentals and it, uh, rentals of the community room and additional work. I asked for a breakdown of that for uh, two thousand four hundred twenty-five dollars. Uh, there was a payment to zip printing um, for envelopes for five hundred forty-five dollars. Um, I asked about that. We had uh, two orders, number ten window envelopes used for mailings from the city and then there were five hundred door hangers used to notify residents. Uh, when, you know, we have road closures and all that kind of thing. There was a bill for three thousand two hundred eight dollars and fifty-three cents to LaBelle and that was for electrical repairs. Um, this is, these are repairs to retrofit park lighting, replace panel contactor, replace time clock, label all time clocks, replace photocell on the roof. And add photocell to the pavilion time clock. There was a payment to City Lathir Village for water bill for nineteen one zero one twelve mile road in the amount of hundred and seventy-nine dollars and forty-two cents. And that was for the water and sewer used at the DPS garage. So that wasn't something I was aware of. So. Uh, there were two charges to ultimate boom party rental for bounce houses. One was for the Juneteenth event. Um, one was four hundred ninety dollars, one was three hundred thirty dollars. One was for the Juneteenth event and um, they're checking on what the other one was. And I think that's it.
And I have a motion to approve um, the May dispersment report.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Is there a second? They moved in second. Is there any further discussion?
Um, I just have a little bit more information to give.
Okay.
The question regarding flips pay um, for additional work. Um, that is for multiple events that happen throughout the month of May.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, when things are scheduled for rental of the community room or. Events that happen in the pavilion or the gazebo or um, in the meeting place that are outside of city events. Um, that's for setup and teardown. Um, it can be for the hours that Cliff actually is here during those events. Uh, some of them are quite lengthy. Um, sometimes there, well, every time we're the pavilion rental, um, we have to open the building up and be here to make sure that. Uh, batteries are available and all of those monies um, are charged at the time of the rental. So this is basically a blow through. So that money comes in as revenue and then it's paid out to them, but it's paid through the city because it's taken in by the city. So it's just.
Right, thanks. Um, I, I ask for a breakdown of what those events were, so.
Um, I have them written on a sticky note here. Um, you know, one is for May sixth for an event uh, that was from four to eight P M. They set up for an event. Uh, that was from eleven A M. to seven P M. May ninth was an event from four to eight.
Okay, can I, can I just get a more detailed list of what the events were?
Um, they're private rentals, but sure.
Okay, thanks.
And then um, I'm still working on the credit card stuff. Um, but the, the ultimate boom party rental, um, the four hundred ninety dollars was for the Juneteenth event for the year. Um, not construction, just a home. Um. It, it's a, of, of not a bounce house, but it's for a.
What do they?
Obstacle course.
Absolutely, an obstacle course. There you go. Sorry. Um, and then uh, the three hundred and thirty was actually um, a check that was reissued because uh, for an event that happened late last year, I want to say. Um, for a bounce house, they never got the check. So we had to reissue that. Um, so that was for another uh, city event that was held.
Oh, okay. And that is under, at the Parks and Rec budget?
Um, I did not look into it, so.
Okay. I mean, it is under, in the Parks and Rec, so budget under community events.
City event, that's where it's taken from. So.
There's someone in the lady.
Just a little more additional information for you.
Okay, thanks.
Um, any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Councilmember Canes.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yeah.
Motion.
Thank you. Next, we'll open up the public hearings for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four budget. Budget hearing. There's anyone that would like to be heard regarding the um, fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four budget? Please step to the microphone or raise your hand on Zoom. And it's a public hearing for the budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. And this is your opportunity to be heard regarding the budget. Okay, close the uh, public hearing, go into the action request. Well, the first one up is to adopt the uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, I think I can um, perhaps speak for my colleagues. I think no one's really prepared to um. Take, do the approval for it and set accurate or. So um, I think that both A and B um, need to be tabled. Is that it, Scott? Or?
Because of the time sensitivity, I would encourage that um, council agree upon a date prior to July first that these items be.
Oh, I agree with that, but I'm saying this just has to be tabled in.
Well, no, I think you adjourn them to a date.
Okay. So um. That's where we're at. We need to have a date for it. Um. And we uh, are at a standstill because two people that need to be here for the budget are unavailable tomorrow. So.
What days do they have available? Yeah. Or did they say?
Ham's not available ones to me.
You said she's not available ones that you.
Is it a possibility that you could discuss the issues that are causing reluctance and. This evening and then as opposed to starting fresh? Uh, my concern is that the time is dwindling. And obviously without an approved budget, city operations aren't going to be continuing.
Well, I think that we're in a, in a emergency situation and I don't think that is the fault of, I mean, I don't know, I won't say fault. But it's not the fault of the council not being able to.
Well, everybody shares in the responsibility, so.
I was saying that they're not at a point where I feel as though we can approve something because. Of our study, so we can talk about it now, but um.
Oh, a major, a major piece of, I think, at least my concern, I, I think. Most everybody else is at least. Resolved at the end, but we don't see, but we don't have an updated budget to see how that affects the, the overall budget itself. So the, the, you know, the. Big increase in expenses was due to the fact that they were expensive that was supposed to happen next fiscal year for the sidewalks, but since the sidewalk vendor is working so quickly. It's hitting us this year. So it's putting us, you know, taking a hit in the general fund, but then that pitch should be given back in the, in the subsequent budget. But um, but again, we don't have, if we could get the number plugged in here and get it, see what effect that would have. But um. I mean, Sue, how hard is it for you to plug that number in and, and then just give us the overall hit to the, the general fund?
There's a lot of steps. It's, it's like a regular effect. It's not just one page that it affects. So it, it takes time to do that. It would take me a couple of days to complete that.
So I guess the thing is we're trying to figure out how do we move in this situation? It was gonna take her a couple of days. I mean, we need to come to some kind of conclusion.
Don't you just have, doesn't your budget just continue if? I mean, what, you know, when there's gonna be a shutdown, whatever. I mean.
They, you know, Congress will stay in session until midnight, whenever, one A M. till they resolve it. Um, and if not, then, you know, the state had the issue a couple of years back where they shut down a lot of their services that.
Also, the option that may not be the popular one is to approve the budget, but then set a date to amend it after July one.
Most not even an accurate budget, so.
Exactly. Yeah. I think, so I'm just curious, I've got to put back it a little bit. Why, why would, is it the spreadsheet? Why would it take two days to plug in?
Because I have to redo the entire booklet. I have to plug it in, in the booklet wherever that would go into. It's not the spreadsheet so much. I can update that. Yes, that's easy. Um, but then transferring all of that and making sure that all of the pages accurately, accurately reflect. That stuff. Yes, that's what takes the time. So.
Well, I think, I mean, yes, you can make changes and approve it subject to those changes, but I, I. Think what the rest of the council is saying is that until they can see what it actually looks like in front of them in the document, then it's. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
You're uncomfortable acting on it.
You're.
Implicate other areas of the budget.
So the other question I have is if this would have come to you in May and you would have approved the budget at that time and then you had these amendments to do. You would still have to. Adjust those numbers going into the new budget. So I don't understand the issue of adopting the budget tonight based on that.
Timing, that's.
I mean, I guess.
I think, yeah.
No. I was just gonna say, I mean, the, the. Right, right now, we're, we're, we're looking at, as we said earlier, about a four hundred and thirty thousand dollar hit to the, the budget with, with the whole sidewalk thing in the budget. So, so, so worst case scenario is, you know, it's, it's gonna be, you know, two hundred and thirty thousand. And we do have one point two million dollars in general fund. So it's not like this is gonna break the city. So, I mean, we could do something while we approve it and then just.
Make those.
Make, make those amendments, you know, once everything is shored up, um, at our next council meeting.
But I think also to answer the question of, if we did this in May and approved it and amended it, we had time. We're under.
But had budget amendments don't come to you until the end of June so that you know what those amendments would need to be.
I guess. The regular budget.
I guess we wouldn't feel as under the gun that we have four days to try to um. Get it together.
Right, but I, I mean, I think that, that the issue, I mean, it's not gonna, it's not gonna affect individual budget items, right? So it's not gonna be like, like, oh, well, because of this, you know, recreation is gonna suffer or, you know, training or, you know. With the, the, unless, unless other people have, and it didn't seem like it in the earlier session, have issues with specific other line.
Yes, I do. Yes.
Which are what? Because we didn't.
Well, as I said, I think it's important that someone needs to make a motion and then have a discussion about it because if there are other outstanding issues. Resolving these budget amendments, coming back and meeting at the twelfth hour is not gonna solve anything if there's still outstanding line item issues that need to be discussed and resolved amongst council. Because it's gonna be impossible to, to approve a budget if there's things that um, aren't satisfactory to everyone.
So then someone needs to make a motion to um, accept the, or adopt the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four budget.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adopt the fiscal twenty-three, twenty-four budget.
Needs to be second.
Second.
Now it's been moved in second. Now you can have your discussion.
Now what? Oh, waiting on me? Oh, okay. Um, I, I will not. Especially after hearing this tonight, I will not vote for a three percent pay increase and increases in training and membership and all of those kinds of things. I, I won't, I won't do that. Especially after we haven't even had, we got information at three o'clock today about job description on all of that stuff. So we, you know, don't have. Adequate information to approve a three percent pay raise when we are now going to be four hundred and some thousand dollars less than what we even thought we were um, when we came here tonight.
Are we discussing?
I think that, yeah, we have to discuss. Because we ran out of time.
But do you, I, I thought you were going over your specifics. Are we not there yet?
I, it's open to talk to, talk about whatever. Um. I. Think. That the three percent raise needs to be in the budget, but I think that the oversight of who is getting the raises needs to be um. Very clear and there needs to be performance uh, evaluation per the personnel um, manual that is documented.
And there has been. Yeah, it is merited. I stated that in the study session. You do not get access to personnel files. That, that is not your purview.
Then I don't approve a three percent raise.
So.
Three percent raise be a budget amendment. Somebody could come to us and say, I think the supply deserves a three percent raise.
That's what, right, Susan just told you. She.
It's not arbitrary.
Evaluations and they were merit based.
I think you did the evaluations after you put the three percent in, didn't you?
Yes, but I still stand by my three percent. If I could give more, I would give more.
I just want to go back to the, you're not gonna approve any raises without seeing the evaluations. Is that what you were saying?
I'm not gonna, without seeing, I, we, we've asked for job descriptions, we've asked for people's responsibilities, we've asked for all of these things for months. We got this information today at three o'clock.
Also got a wage study.
Yes, I guess, and we did not, we didn't um, get to talk about that. Looking at this wage study, our people are overpaid, not underpaid.
I don't know how you can say that.
Well, yeah, I'm gonna, I mean, I'm gonna have to bring on that one because I looked at that and maybe I'm, maybe we've jumped to a wage study. Because I looked at that also, the full one, and there's no way that you can compare Lathir's.
Yeah.
To Sterling Heights.
With a hundred thirty-four thousand people.
That doesn't, I mean, that.
You, you have to look, when I pulled the wage study, what I did was I based it off from the population. So it was close to the size of where we're at. I also based it off from Oakland County, Wayne County and Macomb County because that's the communities that you're gonna draw staff to work here.
You have Kent, Allegan, okay. Well, you have to look at the size and um, if you look at the size, we are definitely overpaid.
But you also have to look at the area in which you employ people. You can't expect to pay people the same thing that somebody in the upper peninsula would be making here in the Detroit metro area.
I know, but like forty thousand dollars more? Like, there's, this is, this is not data that.
Thirty thousand dollars more. I gave you an average of what those differences were. And I showed you what the highest number was, what the lowest number was, and then I took the median and based it off on what our current staff makes.
Right.
And in most of those.
And I'm someone who's paying more than LaBonia with ninety-five thousand five hundred thirty-five.
But I'm drawing again.
I, I'm. Yes, I understand.
So, so where are your people going to come from that you want to hire in these positions?
But a job.
Pulling from those three.
A job in a community with forty-one hundred residents as compared to a hundred and thirty-four thousand, three hundred forty-six residents. We're not comparing apples to apples here.
Which, which position? So you, you're talking about.
Why don't, why don't we?
They probably have an entire staff doing.
Scott, did you look at this? There's all of these things.
But I'm telling you right now, you may have.
I just picked out one. I picked out one. So there's fifteen other.
Let's go again to the, to wages. So the one thing that I will say is that um, when it comes to like the treasurers, there's three roles that the treasurer is. Doing right now. However, again, and I, and if we had the descriptions ahead of time. To be able to see where they, some of this could be transferred maybe or discuss some of it, like, you know. And I'm totally guessing on this, like, some of this could be absorbed from um. The deputy treasurer.
Yeah, communities our sides don't have a treasurer, a payroll specialist, a H R generalist and a benefits coordinator. There's probably one or two people doing all of those jobs. So to take this and say this is what each of these positions are, is getting and we should be paying, you know, over two hundred thousand dollars to this one person because she's doing these three jobs. It doesn't work that way. We don't have that kind of money.
That's not despite all I heard I was asking for.
Well, let's not be so literal. I mean, you know.
All I'm trying to do is to get you to realize the area in which you will attract. Staff to work here comes from Oakland County, Macomb County and Wayne County, maybe Washington County.
Right, and we're paying more than.
Not willing.
Novi, we're paying more than West Bluefield, we're paying more than um. Oh, sorry, you know, oh, yeah, 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 we are. And also you, you also didn't like use the same communities and the different things. So maybe. One community has a treasurer, they don't have a payroll specialist. So there's other communities in here. Um, or they, someone may have an H R generalist, but they don't have a treasurer or an assistant or a deputy treasurer. So this is not. I mean, the, the only thing that it would be consistent would be the size and, and if you had, I, I can see adding a little more for the county. As opposed to outstate, I totally understand that, but we're. Way off on some of this stuff, so um.
I was just providing you with information.
Well, you are, but you've been telling us all along that our staff is underpaid and we have to raise all of these things up and looking at these numbers, that's not the case.
Well, you look at the clerk's wages, the clerk is very underpaid. The average is seventy-eight thousand and the third makes.
You can't take it, Susan, you can't take an average of a, a community of one hundred thirty-four thousand and thirty-eight, three thousand eight hundred nineteen and take the average of that. I'm sorry, you're not comparing. Comparable communities.
Coming from, to apply for these jobs when they can get jobs in the same county.
Well, I don't know.
I mean.
The city clerk, do you know, are they certified? I, I mean, like, what, you don't, we don't have the. The descriptions of even what the positions are as we've got this stuff tonight, so.
I mean, you need to do it. I mean, this, this gives, gives you raw data right here. I mean, I don't see the, the ability to be able to draw conclusions from this because you don't have, you know, the.
There are data, but we're, our, what we're paying is far above comparable sized cities.
Yeah, you need to make sure that you're comparing apples to apples in terms of the particular roles. Um, I'd like to see some standard deviations on here to see how, you know, how the code guards are mean, the median.
And that, and I'm no mathematician by far, but when you put in a city like Detroit for the clerk. And then do that percentage or like for Sterling Heights, that's what gave me pause.
Yes.
When I looked at this, we're the city of a hundred and thirty-four thousand and they're paid a hundred and thirty-four thousand. It it, I think, and again, I'm giving you the asterix that I'm no mathematician, but that's going to throw off what the average is.
Well, you're saying exactly what I'm saying, because a hundred, a hundred, you know, so the big Sterling Heights, a hundred and thirty-four thousand, Sterling Heights is a large city, the clerk probably has a staff. So the clerk is probably paid for their management ability and and, you know, tell them, I'm not saying you're not managing, but you're not managing it. So, you know, you're comparing, you know, without, without looking at the specific positions, you're comparing apples and grapefruit, there's no. So you can get, you can make a a raw comparison, but there's nothing statistically significant when there's, there's too much skewness to this data.
And I'll give you a better example, too, is that when it comes to any of these cities that's in Wayne County. They have their own election department, they have their um a deputy clerk. Um, and so. That's enough, I mean, yeah, this is.
This this doesn't support, I I don't.
Now, I also, um, I don't have so much of a problem of giving um people their their raises. If you know exactly what they're supposed to do, and then if you know what they're actually doing. And um. Let's just take the Band-Aid off, the feedback that I get is that a lot of the employees here are doing more than what they're supposed to be doing. They're getting dumped on to do more work when they shouldn't be.
Right, so if if you've got employees who are given more work, who who have a positive evaluation, who. You know, are showing that they're they're doing their job and they're going above and beyond, I mean, in in an environment where there's eight percent inflation, I don't think it. Provided this, that, you know, they're, that they're merit driven.
So, what I think is that, and maybe I'm wrong in saying this, maybe this needs to be redone. And needs to be apples to apples with um communities that are. In just Oakland County. Within the size of um. Within the size of Lathrop.
Is there, yeah, I don't think there's. But is there room to do like a a budget amendment to, maybe if we. Agree, like, maybe they should get a two percent increase or something like that.
So the one thing that I want, you know, people to understand is that the three percent is like a pot, what, and I have no, for me, okay. I have no problem of approving that pot, but the way that pot is dispersed. Is where the questions come out, and that's where we kind of are getting, uh, we're not getting anywhere with that, okay.
I get you on that, but I think there's also, like, if we tackled your, you know, your issue. I still think that there's people on this council who have an issue with giving the three percent raise, so I'm saying, is there. I'm trying to find compromises in all, in all pots.
I agree, but I'm saying that there's some people, maybe they don't um get a three percent, a three percent raise, maybe there's some people that don't get a raise at all. The pot has to be approved first, and I think for us to be a. Um, just to get right size and and not right size, what is worth looking for regarding staffing.
Better understanding.
To better understanding. No, I'm just, I'm trying to talk, I'm trying to talk it through and I'm getting myself frustrated, but um.
And I want to say, I have no problem rewarding staff that are doing their jobs, that are doing. That that things that are getting done, that our residents' needs are being met, things are being run, but that's not the feedback. That I get, and I don't know where anything is.
Copy there for one second, okay, so you take, you take a situation where things aren't getting done. So you you you, let's say, let's say you need twelve people to get things done, we've only got eight, so those those eight people are working their butts off. To get as much done as they can, but things still aren't getting done. So basically by that premise, you're saying, let's not reward these people who are working their butts off because things aren't getting done when they don't have enough people to get things done.
But I don't know if that's the case, maybe we're doing, focusing on things that. You know, the priorities, we haven't ever had a a meeting about setting priorities of where.
Maybe somebody's doing their job and something else is thrown at them that they shouldn't have had on their plate in the first place, and so that's why things aren't getting done.
And I'm not that this is really my place to say, but I've asked before, what are the things that aren't getting done? What are the the issues and we've yet to receive, but what are those issues? I think that's why we're all just sitting here, right, well. Say repeatedly, I, you know, I call, I ask for service, I don't get service. What, what is that?
Answer doesn't follow up.
Right, but that's a, that's a general statement, so.
General statement, it's it's something that's been said for, you've come up on.
Not finished.
I mean, it's, it's something that's been a constant in the community, whether we, at one point, not that long ago, we had twelve people working here. Now twelve people can't handle some of the basic stuff, there's an issue, things need to be re uh, you know, re.
I mean, that was.
So my point is, what what is not getting done, there's, we've identified certain issues. And, I mean, I've got, yeah, I mean, we've identified certain issues that you brought up, but those are not day-to-day staff operations, that that stuff that. You know, we're.
Some of them are, but not all.
Some of them, but most of them were policy directives from council that either were partially or or. Not completed or only partially completed. The the bigger issue, the idea that phone calls are not returned, is it the same person calling every day to say, you know, it's raining?
No, it is not the same person, it's a widespread issue.
Some specifics with that, what are the issues, what, who, what areas are not being addressed, is it code enforcement that's not being addressed, is it? Resident services, what what is it that is not being addressed, what is that, this shouldn't be a very hard problem to figure out, where is the breakdown? But we always speak in generalities, my phone calls never get returned, if staff isn't doing their job. What does that mean, how do you address it if you don't know what it is, how is Sue supposed to say, staff, do your job? I don't know what you're not doing, but last night council said they're getting a bu- a bunch of complaints about stuff not getting done.
Oh, well, yeah.
So.
That there's not really a process for something like that.
I mean, that's what, that's what council, you're supposed to discuss what the issues are and then give directives to the staff so that.
No, we can't give directions to the staff, only to.
To the administration to be carried out by staff, council, once again, is a policymaking body, they're not a day-to-day operations, it's not the responsibility of council. To to micro-manage the staff and tell them what they.
But it is a responsibility of council to make sure that we are being fiscally responsible and spending our tax dollars. To meet the needs of the residents that pay those tax dollars, that is our responsibility.
Do you understand that there are more people in this community than just the residents, the businesses pay taxes too?
Yes, they do, well, okay.
Are there needs being met?
Probably not, our Southfield Road looks, I mean.
You can go to the county and talk to them about the road, that's not the city's responsibility, but what exactly is it that what resident needs are not being met so that. You can provide a directive to to the administration to have staff address it. This isn't the first time I've brought this up, but it's very frustrating.
I really, I mean, and my frustration is on both ends, though, my frustration is, yes, needs are not getting met, but my frustration also is that we're short-staffed. And I don't see that, so I've asked for that also to prove where the short staff is. It is showing where we, if we had all of this in the big picture, then we could have a better understanding of what's going on, instead of. Instead, exactly, instead of generalities on both sides, we need to have proof in front of us, and it's not where. I know for me, I'm not asking to be in the day-to-day operations, I'm trying to be fiscally responsible. And have the people in the right positions and making sure that we are giving them the resources that they have. And for me personally, is where, when I personally get complaints, there's too much on the staff's plate. Because of things being delegated to them, that's where I also have my issue at, that's why I'm asking and have asked repeatedly. While we're in council, while we've been in meetings, please give me a case of um, a business case. Of why we need extra people. And I mean, this is where, and I did ask for this, honestly, I asked for this at noon for today.
I asked for that.
And so, and that was giving grace because I asked for that, I've asked for this, um. Want to say two months, two months ago. And so now here we are trying to approve this, and then that's why I do have an issue with um. Just like staff is protected, now I feel protected of the council, because why should they go into saying they're going to approve a budget when it's not very, there's mistakes. Third budget that's has mistakes in it, fourth, sorry, fourth.
I can get offense to that.
And my, it, tell me if I'm right or wrong, has there been mistakes in every single budget that has been given to us?
Every budget has been a draft so far coming to you.
But I'm saying there's been numbers in the budget that has been wrong, and if anybody else, if you want to say if I'm wrong, please tell me that I'm wrong.
Nope.
Have you ever had a budget come to you that's a hundred percent correct every single time?
We have, we have not, we have not had budgets come to us where there are mistakes in it like that. It's a working document and I get that because I've been doing it for twelve years, I get that, okay? But there's, there's, just like for the fact of, for where I even walked in at, that what was missing out of the first one, the library, the library, the library thing, the the cost is missing.
That's on the amendments, it is in budget.
So, all around, um.
Yeah, to to circle it, but to circle it back home, uh uh again, I I think it's, it's ludicrous to say that we don't want to give our staff a raise because. Things aren't getting done, I mean, I'm in the office multiple times a week and people, it's not like people are sitting with their hands up or not. Doing their job, they're they're they're, they're busy. And and it's not like they're sitting back doing nothing or they're not, they're inefficient, they just have more work than they can do.
But I think that they have things on their plate that needs to be removed from their plate, that that is.
But that's not their fault.
I get that, I get that. I get that, and I I think that you're absolutely right, Scott, to stop talking in generalities and and. Um, what's not being done, and believe me, I'm also protective of the staff, and like I'm saying is that I do think that they need to have. Um, an increase, no, I don't think it should be across the board, yes, I do need, I think that there is some responsibility, there is some. Um, yes, there is some responsibility for council to make the, or to know something about who's getting the raises. And having some um support behind it.
As far as access to personnel files.
Not asking for personnel files.
It was just asked why you didn't have the evaluations in front of you, that is not your access.
This one is not asking for personnel files, this one, all I'm saying is to have some support behind giving out the raises.
And I gave that, I said I did the performance reviews and it is merit-based, in my opinion.
But we don't know what the, what are they even doing, we don't know what anyone's responsibility are, what can anyone be held accountable to? If if someone calls Susie Stuck and she doesn't call them back, and um is is that on her or is it not in her responsibilities? Or whatever, we don't know any of that, we can't tell anyone anything, I mean, you can't answer a question because. We don't know how anything works, at least I don't, and. Again, got got this information today, but did not have time to go over anything. Uh, we're talking about flex time being paid for flex time and and that's based on if you work over forty hours a week. I I don't know when you have a salary of eighty, ninety thousand, I don't, I don't think the expectation is forty hours a week, that's not how it works. Outside of here, that's not how it works in the real world, you're paid that amount, you're, it's a salary, you don't count your hours. You get your work done, you do what you have to do, so that that's where I have a problem, again, I have no problem compensating people. But now someone's going to be here for a month or two months and they're going to get a three percent raise, that happened last year with a five percent raise, so. Like, that's not okay, that, I think that would be demotivating to people who are working hard. If it's just across the board, oh, everybody gets the same thing, no matter.
Us are saying.
What they do.
We've all said merit-based.
Well, it isn't, it isn't merit-based in here.
But we, you, the the budget doesn't say how things are executed, the budget says what the pot of money is.
And it's cause for a three percent raise for staff, based on evaluation, so then evaluations.
Are are directing, this, the the city administrator, he said on merit. And then we have to get, that's the separation of duties, then it becomes her job to figure out how to, how to. Dole that out based on merit, I mean, that's the reality. And and no matter what the raise is. Whether it's one percent, a half percent, eight percent, I mean, she's the one who has to dole it out.
I thought we were discussing too, and all of a sudden the budget became three.
It's always been three.
It's always been three.
It wasn't three, she came with two percent and we complained and then she came back with three percent with an evaluation.
When the complaint was first, we were. In the hole. And then going back through the budget and trying to. Analyze data a little thoroughly, a little more thoroughly, not that I didn't do that to begin with, but where I could. Increase revenue. Forecasting that, we had more room in the budget and there was a surplus.
But we didn't have room for parks and rec, we don't have room for resident things, there's a deficit in those areas, but there's a surplus.
Now, who's going to provide any of that if you don't pay your staff well?
If you don't have residents here, you won't, don't need staff, again, our organizational chart has residents at the top. We are all here to support our residents in this community.
You have to have staff in order to meet those needs, that's all I'm saying, and you, they have to be compensated. You keep trying to beat that out of them and what do you get in return, how does that affect morale here at the city? It's terrible right now, because nobody knows what is going to happen with their wages. They are worth that and council wants to fight over that, and you asked me to give you a reason. To merit base it, I did the performance evaluations and I believe everybody is worth at a minimum three percent. And council wants to fight over that.
Well, because you're telling us that they're underpaid and that you don't have data to back that up.
So, can you at least give us a copy of what the evaluation form is that you gave to them?
Absolutely.
So then we can um go from there to understand how they were even um. How they were even evaluated, that would be a good start.
Standard evaluation that has been used here for quite a bit, I followed exactly what the last one was. Yes, going forward, because they will be here more than a year going into the next fiscal year. So it would be unfair to not give them that three percent increase.
Why is it all done in, it's all at one time, why it don't, why don't people hired, have a review after a year, they're doing their job to get a raise, why is this? All done all across the board, has it always been done like this?
It's part of the budget process, it's the allocation of, this is the time of year that the funds get allocated.
I understand that, but I'm just saying, this this raise situation, this does, this isn't. That's not how it should be done, this isn't a union, I mean, if it was a union, that would be one thing, because that is how things are done, this is not.
Well, technically, in the union I was in, you still got your raise when, after your seniority date, so.
What's that, oh, you did, you, no, you did.
Sorry, let's be honest.
So you did have to wait, though.
Yeah, yeah.
You didn't just get it automatically.
You had one, they had two, you had one that was a part of the union, then you have one that comes for your seniority. Of when you get your one year.
Typically, everybody has to be here their whole year before they get that raise, but it still has to be included in the budget. It's not something that effective July one, if you didn't start until August, September, November, whenever. You would not get that three percent until you hit that one year.
That's what she was asking.
Yes, and that, that is the difference.
Okay, so we have, so we have a person who started one month ago, we're going to have a, we have a person who just started now or is going to be starting. They were pay, they were. They were paid, they were.
That's not included in that. For those employees. And I have not done an evaluation on our newest employee because she's only been here a month.
So her pay won't just automatically go up?
Not until she hits her one year.
Well, she won't. Hit her one year until we're, until almost the next.
Right, but it's on the next fiscal year and that's what we're approving for the next fiscal year.
So, what Suzie is saying is, but I'm assuming this is what Suzie is saying is that. As I was also saying, is that approve the, the three percent pot, but no one gets their increase until their actual seniority date?
Everybody else gets it going July one forward because that is. That is how those raises are always handled in the fiscal year. It's for anybody that has not been here a year yet, so Jessica won't get her three percent until August, when she was hired in August. Um, if Bill were still here, he would have gotten his in January. Everybody else has been here more than a year outside of. Our utility biller and the new code enforcement person who will start in July and will not be eligible until next year for a raise. But this is how raises have always been given to all the rest of the staff, it's effective July one. As long as they have been here longer than the year.
I've not been involved with the evaluations, but typically the budget. A process entails and encompasses, like you said, the approval of raises. You'd have to, I'm not sure when it's effective for the employees, it's not.
I also think that we're in a, a different situation, uh, Bruce has a, a page full of things, huh? A binder full of things that are not completed, there is um. It just seems things are extremely different and I, that is where the pause comes from. At least for me.
I get most. Correct me if I'm wrong Bruce, but the most of the items that were listed were things that were directed to Sue to be taken care of. And they've either been completed, partially completed or not completed, is that, the, your list is not directives for the clerk, it's not directives.
Definitely, some of it, some of it.
Code enforcement maybe and, you know, things like that, but it's.
Well, then, all of those things aren't getting done, how can we be confident that the other people are being evaluated on? Getting things done, that, that's, I have a.
Sorry, I'm, you have to wait to public comment. Thank you, sorry.
I mean, that's why you, you evaluate and you hire your administrator, I mean, you're saying that she's lying to you about doing. Performance evaluation.
No, I'm not saying she's lying to us, I'm not, I'm not saying that at all. Well, I'm saying, given the fact that we've been given this amended budget, which now puts us four hundred thousand in arrears, where do we have room for raises?
Those are budget amendments for last year's budget, that's completely different than.
No, it's taking four hundred thousand dollars off of the beginning fund balance for this coming year.
But it's because it's put an additional two hundred and twenty thousand dollars in sidewalk projects. Uh, to last year's fiscal year, which will be reimbursed in the next fiscal year, so it's really putting you maybe.
It's not for the upcoming expenditures and revenue match, that's different for the new fiscal year than it is for this fiscal year.
Right, the only factor is gonna be on the starting.
You still have a balanced budget that is in the surplus coming to you.
But our fund balance is going down, 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 so we have to start looking at. Things like across the board, three percent increases. What's up?
That's already included in, I mean, in the balanced budget.
I know it is, but we're running out of money, we can't continue doing what we're doing here.
Have a balanced budget coming to you next year.
Well, folks, it seems like we're at a standstill because we have to. You have to, well, there is a motion still on the table, so um. And I. Really feel um. Not tongue tied, what is it, my hands being tied. Yeah, it's a balanced budget, but um. Well, all you do is just take a, a motion on it. I mean, uh, take a.
You said you had several, I think you had several things you were.
Is that the increases in, in training and then um, meetings and. Memberships, all of that, those things have gone drastically over the years and they're continuing to grow, go up. Increases for, for DDA, I mean, there's things that are just.
DDA is a part of this question.
Um, it is kind of. Yeah. It's included, it's included in here.
DDA has their own separate budget.
There's wages included in here, but it's, it's not their operational, that is.
Right.
That's approved by.
Right.
So what um, else do you have, Karen?
Oh, those, those are the main things. I can remove those items and, you know, put something back in for residents, except our. Parks and Rec budget is basically nothing. Um, we had a, we had a.
I, I added back to it, yes.
Yeah, well, right, 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 I mean, we had a garden tour this past weekend and it was fabulous and. People enjoy having those kinds of things where community comes together, people meet neighbors, keeps people connected. Um, and we have totally lost, lost that.
You don't have staff to do that, you don't have that in the budget, you don't want to pay for that, but you want to have.
We actually did hire someone whose job description is not in here. Who was hired to do special, to do events for city, to take over the parks and recreational.
No, she was not, she was not to take over.
I gave you guys that, that information, you raised the salary twelve thousand dollars.
She was not hired to take over parks, right, she's for.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about Cory, received a twelve thousand dollar raise to. It then include the parks and rec in things in her. Those were her responsibilities, when the job was posted after she left, when the job was posted, it included those same things. And that is what Brittany was hired under that job description at that pay rate to do those things. And that's, those are the things that have fallen.
But the cost agreement from the DDA, the DDA pays ninety percent of Brittany's. Salary, the city pays ten percent.
Agreement was supposed to be, the agreement was the city was supposed to pay more.
That's not the agreement that's in place.
Well, that part, that position then had a pay increase for no reason.
That's not the agreement that is in place. I'm, I'm not arguing that if you find that it is valuable for a parks and rec person to be hired. That person needs to be budgeted into this budget, but there is not room for that position. There's not funding for that position.
But perhaps it, there should be, because perhaps it's something that's very important to the community. Perhaps I would take away three percent pay raise, perhaps I would reevaluate what people are doing. And how is it meeting the needs of our community, I don't, I haven't seen that done, so.
But you also haven't put together a proposal throughout this whole process.
A proposal for what, I can't even get, I, I foiled uh, in uh, March of last year. I foiled so much, much information, I still haven't gotten hardly any of it. So, to pull, put together a proposal when I don't have basic information.
That's the numbers in the budget.
Oh my gosh, okay.
So, figure out and. The whole process of the budget is to figure out, you know, if you, if you, I mean, that's kind of like what we were telling Sue last week is. Put together a business case and we'll, you know, she said money's not in the budget and we said we'll figure out where to pull money. And if, if we needed another person, we could figure it out, but if you're proposing that, you need to come, come.
If I don't know what anyone's doing.
Is there?
How do you do that?
Scott, is there a way we can like, implement when the. The three percent goes into effect, or do we have that ability at all?
I mean, it, it's.
Or does it have to go July one?
It, it's, the budget year starts July one, so without an, without an approved budget, there's no expenditures in the new budget year. So there's no city operation, so your residents will be getting zero service.
Right. Yeah, I get that part, I'm trying. Trying to figure, because like.
But what I would suggest doing is not, this isn't gonna change by not approving it tonight and meeting again on Thursday. Your, your positions, your opinions on what, where money should be allocated is not going to change. Instead, what I would recommend doing is use this time, we have plenty of it, to, to talk about it, let's go through the budget. How much are, what is three percent in employee raises, is that sixteen thousand dollars? Approximately, maybe less.
You also.
We'll start adding the numbers up.
You have benefits and everything else that also increases.
Calculate that out right now, let's do it, somebody get out of.
Sorry, paying people to do that and that information has.
That, that's my point, it's like one. For a code enforcer, I came with a proposal with this, where are we gonna get this number, where are we gonna get this number, that, that's what we do.
Isn't it what we do?
Yes, it is.
Oh, and when we ask for information, we don't get any information, so.
It's all in the budget, that's why I bring the budget to every single meeting, that's where you get the information.
Right, okay.
How are you gonna be able to make, to rectify this, so you wanted to add a parks and rec coordinator, the last parks and rec coordinator I think made approximately forty five to fifty thousand dollars.
Right, so pull it out.
We had it in our budget for last year and it wasn't, the position wasn't filled, the money was used elsewhere.
So, find, find the money in your budget tonight to hire a parks and rec coordinator.
But is that where, is that the most important thing? Is that the most important, and I'm asking everyone, is that the most important thing about getting a parks and rec person? Or is it to make sure that certain city services are still funded?
It's, it's gonna depend on where she.
And so that's, I mean.
It is, I mean, it, it is, I mean, that's, that's how the priority.
To come up with the money.
Oh, simply announce it, okay.
Okay, well, have you offered anything? Say, we've heard Brittany and cutting the three percent wages.
And Brittany's only ten percent of the, only ten percent of her budget, so that's, that's gonna be negligible.
So, what is, what's besides the numbers being whatever they are, what is holding up the approval of the budget?
Can I just ask a question about two contractual staff positions or. One at seventy four, eight forty four, and one, who are these contractual services?
Contract would be probably. DPW, it could be.
One eighteen and that one says seventy four, eight forty four.
It's in the local street fund, seventy four thousand eight hundred forty four dollars for contractual services.
The gift of Webster.
Spend every year for one?
Are you, are you?
Well, it depends if you're using the study session one or the.
Yeah, one eighteen is page two or three of the packet.
That's why I was giving numbers in the, in the budget.
Okay, go ahead, now this one you're saying.
Yeah, that, is that give a, give a Webster, it gets a lot of Webster and um.
It could be DPW, that, that's later service. The treasurer just spoke from above.
This one is seventy four, eight forty four?
Yeah, the same thing on, on paper.
It's, it, it's spread out among the different funds or, is there contractors?
Contractual service, seventy three, three seventy six. Oh, oh yeah, then it changes that, oh, then they, that's the same people?
That's uh, probably DPW with the, well, the pension tax, so.
That's what was budgeting for last year, and so what do we pay for the retention tanks? Don't we pay for a service there, where are they?
I think it's, it's less than that, I think that would, the initial funding included some capital contribution. So that they have money to pull from for repairs, I think it's about fifty thousand a year we pay the, through the county, but.
Under sewer. While you're doing that, what's, what is preventing us from um, adopting this budget?
You don't have sufficient votes.
And, and I was really talking to the rest of the council.
Sewer maintenance is where it's at.
So it's, but it's lumped in with that, with other stuff.
About city services, so.
What is preventing us from passing this budget this evening?
I think we just need to allow for a budget amendments because we can't, I mean, either way, it would be. Fiscally irresponsible, so if you don't turn it in, it's basically irresponsible, it's irresponsible to say that now we don't have any staff. It's just irresponsible. We need to figure out a way, we just need to allow for budget amendments, I mean, it's not, it's not accurate. I know, I'm just saying, we need to just.
I don't have confidence in any of that, so.
So unfortunately, we're in that state right now, but.
Can we put a date on amending this, if we approve it tonight, can we set a date to? With any meetings? We can start looking at it on July, it's our next meeting in July.
Yeah, but if pay raises are going into effect July one, that doesn't do anything, you can't give a pay raise and then take it away.
Well, there's, there's other things we can look into, correct, because.
I mean, we can call for the vote so you can get it on record that was not gonna happen, so. Yeah, I mean, we don't have, there's no one giving any um, any um, other suggestions. Not going through the lines to figure out um, how to adjust for. Any, to do any adjustments, um, the um. Three percent, I think that, that is such a. That is more of a hold my nose and, and do it only because I know there are people that deserve to have that raise. Um, but I also feel as though that there needs to be some type of check and balance. That there has been some type of evaluation done and that is, and it's validated. Why this particular position needs to have a, a raise.
I mean, are you comfortable seeing this? The data that we got on the salaries, like we don't even know where we're at and we're going to be raising.
But I'm also at a point where, because I'm also a resident.
If the vote fails, I think you have an obligation to your constituents to stay here until you have a consensus.
You said this last year.
Difference is last year, we have more time, now we only have what, two days to figure out, figure this out.
Did not come back to me with any questions until tonight.
Questions, I questioned the raise from the very beginning.
But no proposal.
Yes.
You know, I.
There's things you're not happy with, anybody's not happy with.
Anybody, I handed this out on June fourth, I even asked in the weekly update, please let me know if you have questions or concerns so we can address.
It's not a question or concern, what are you going to say, I'm going to say, I don't think this, I don't think that. Everyone, there should be a three percent raise across the board, what would you have said? I I totally disagree.
I think based on you hired me as the administrator, that is my job to evaluate that I gave you that I did that performance evaluation. And I believe everybody is merited that three percent.
You actually just told us that tonight.
You can disagree on that, but that is my role as the administrator and I come to you with that proposal.
Okay, so what, what good would have sending an email to you?
Only thing that you're concerned about, then you've set whatever percentage it is that you think that people deserve.
I don't know.
Administrator, it's my job to say whether or not somebody deserves an increase. It's whoever sits in this position, it's their job, it's not council's job, they can come to you with that proposal, if you don't agree. Then you say no. But you, it's not fair of council to say that you believe or don't believe certain people need a raise or don't need a raise, that's not your role.
It's our role to allow to to decide how much is going to go towards administrative costs that have gone up. More than a hundred percent since two thousand seventeen, eighteen, two thousand eighteen, nineteen, over a hundred percent they've gone up. So it it is that responsibility, again, to make sure that we're being fiscally responsible, that. People are being paid for what residents need and what the community needs, and I think there's been a real disconnect. There's been a real disconnect, what's that?
I was fiscally responsible in the budget I put together, it is balanced, it shows a surplus.
Of four thousand dollars, was it four thousand eight hundred dollars? Okay, okay. And the fund balance went down how much more?
That is this year's budget.
Okay.
So um. Arguing about it's not going to get it done, so what is it that? Can be done tonight, because basically we're going to be sequestered here until this gets done, because again, we have. Two days. To get it together.
Well, we could pass the budget for the amount minus four hundred and some thousand dollars that we didn't know we didn't have until tonight. Or are we passing it for these things specifically?
These are two separate.
Yeah, one's an amendment, the amendment is the next one.
I'm talking about the, the um. The budget, tw- twenty three, twenty four budget.
What's the question?
Can we approve the total amount that's been then, that's been budgeted minus four hundred and some thousand? That we didn't know we were going to be short until tonight. Or does it have to be, are we approving it specifically for the things that are on these line items?
Unless you have different suggestions of what should be on the line items, you have to approve it as it's. I mean, it's presented, or if you have specific conditions or changes. Then those are the discussions that, like I said, council will have to come to a consensus.
Specific line item changes, is that what?
Yeah, I mean, if you're, if you're saying that the, that this budget should reflect decreases and training, wages. Administrative costs, well, then you need to identify where those decreases are going to come from. And then you. In the alternative, either that money goes back into the the fund balance or goes into a different line item, so, but there has to be some discussion, there has to be some consensus. Otherwise.
Yeah, and that going until that you figure something out.
Alright, so you want me to go through every place where there was a. A raise, okay?
I mean, we don't have a choice but to do it because.
Or will you have concerns? Instead each one, are you concerned with each one, or are you concerned with a few?
Well, I have to go through page by page to find.
I find isn't if it's balanced, but I do have issues with things that we've put in here and things that we've taken out. And I I do have concerns that there's an awful lot going into staff and administration and this building. And it all comes out of what we're supposed to be doing for our residents. That's my opinion.
Well, technically, the staff and people in this building are doing things for the residents, I mean, they are technically. Technically, just a little.
I mean.
I get it. So. We can take um, take a vote um, on it, I um. Yeah, we can take a vote on it. Roll call. Councilmember Miller?
No.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yes.
Councilmember Kenez?
Lunch free lockins, yes.
Motion carry. So what the fiscal year twenty twenty two, twenty three budget amendments?
Budget amendment for you. All taxes um, in revenue. We are shown that we're decreasing the amount for this year by two hundred and twenty five thousand nine hundred eighty two dollars. And other revenue reducing by twenty four thousand eight hundred and sixty eight dollars. So for the total of all general fund revenues coming in, there's a reduction of two hundred and fifty thousand eight hundred and fifty one dollars. Um, for road bond fund, uh, we have added eighty eight thousand dollars that was not in there. Um, previously, so that is to cover. Roads, projects that are being done. Um, in capital acquisition fund, uh, there was more money that was spent than was allocated for. Capital acquisitions that were done in the last year, that total amount was three thousand one hundred seventy six dollars, so that total. Is uh. Decreasing um, total operating funds by one hundred sixty two thousand eight hundred fifty one dollars. Going into your expenditures on page three. Um, again, administration is decreasing by seventeen thousand two hundred and eight dollars. Police department is decreasing by forty three thousand one hundred ninety nine dollars. Public services, which is the Department of Public Works, um, that actually increased two hundred thirty six thousand eight hundred eighty three dollars. Recreation decreased thirty six thousand eight hundred eighty nine dollars. Um, so the total general fund, um, there is an increase of costs. By one hundred eighty two thousand eight hundred twenty seven dollars, so to include those costs. Uh, major streets uh, for work that has been done additionally this year. Um, there's an increase of one thousand or one million one hundred six thousand two hundred sixty eight dollars. Local streets is eight hundred ninety one thousand nineteen dollars. Water, there's a decrease of five hundred forty five thousand five hundred thirty three dollars. Sewer, there's a decrease from the original budget of six hundred forty six thousand one hundred twelve dollars. Capital acquisition, again, that is covering that twelve thousand five hundred seven dollars that was additional in there. And that is a total um, of all funds, an increase for expenditures of one million nine hundred seventy six dollars. And then that breaks that down um, throughout the rest of the budget agenda or amendments that are here. Um, some of the additional costs for uh, public services this year. Um, that increased that line for the public service department is the spring sidewalks that were done this year. As opposed to the coming fiscal year, that increased that by two hundred and twenty thousand. Um, for capital. Expenditures out of the street fund or major street, uh, the increase is one million one hundred twenty nine thousand three hundred four dollars. And for uh, the local streets is the same amount to cover those projects. I'm going into the water. Capital expenditures for stop box replacement, um, we had budgeted fifty thousand. Um, we actually have spent uh, through June of this year, June fifteenth, seventy seven thousand seven hundred ten dollars. Um, so we're asking to amend that to ninety thousand, so it's twenty thousand coming out of the capital expenditures. Water heater replacement, uh, that was originally budgeted for eight hundred sixty thousand dollars. The water repeat replacement program was not done, um, so we're dropping that down to a hundred and fifty thousand, so that's a decrease of seven hundred and ten thousand dollars. Your water main replacement program. Um, that uh, has increased by four hundred and twenty five thousand dollars, so that we're asking to bump that up to nine hundred thousand from four hundred and seventy five thousand. Fire hydrant work uh, was budgeted at a hundred thousand dollars and we have uh, increased that. Uh, to two hundred and ninety thousand, so we're asking for a hundred and ninety thousand dollar increase in the capital expenditures. Um, and then going to the last page of the document. Um, just to make sure that the road bond is uh, reflected correctly in the budget for expenditures, the interest in. Can't say the word, the interest expense uh, will be um. Two hundred and eighteen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, so that's an increase. And the bond principal is three hundred and forty thousand dollars, so that's an increase totaling five hundred fifty eight dollars and seven, or seven. Five hundred fifty eight thousand seven hundred fifty dollars, those are your budget amendments for you.
Is there a motion? Need a second. It's been moving in second and now, is there any discussion? No discussion?
I know, um. Mrs. Ben, I know that the one thirty two. Is correct, is there a way she can update it and just send it back to us? I mean, I'm okay with approving, just the library. Just to have it corrected. I don't, I don't mind.
What's, what's the number, I can just amend the, amend the.
One hundred thirty two thousand?
Yeah, so I'll amend my um. Motion to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three budget amendments with the addition of the uh, hundred and thirty two thousand dollars. That's missing from the library uh, line item on page one.
It's been moving seconds, any discussion on this one? Hearing none, roll call please. Roll call, Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yeah.
Councilmember Kenez? Councilmember Miller?
No.
Motion carry.
Um, the police, primary report, Laker Boulevard, six ninety six crossover.
Can we table, uh, we table voting on this?
We need to say motions, we needed to table it, you know, yeah, go ahead.
Can you at least um, like, let us know what it is?
Yeah, give the information, yeah.
Absolutely. Good evening, council, uh, it has come to the police department's attention that uh, eleven miles outfield is becoming a. Major bumper, traffic crashes, injury accidents and things like that. We are a member of the uh, Traffic Improvement Association, you know, we asked them to come out and do a study at that intersection. Uh, we have found that um, over a three year period, they did a study, we've had a total of forty eight traffic crashes there at that intersection alone. Uh, everybody's familiar with the intersection, you're eleven miles south of exiting traffic westbound, how fast they go off that that exit ramp. Yeah, I'm sorry, Laker Boulevard, yeah. Um, roughly uh, thirty three thousand cars passed through there today. Um, so it's obviously a very major uh, busy artery through the city of Laker Village. Um, so with that information, uh, CIA has some criteria that they follow. They consider anything over five traffic crashes a year um, as a significant impact in a uh, in an intersection. And we're well over that that number, and so in that intersection. What's tough is that you have exiting traffic on the six ninety six and then entering traffic on the eastbound side. So traffic lights wouldn't be appropriate there just due to the volume of the traffic and the nature of what people are doing there. Uh, and so the next best thing was to actually block off the overpass. Uh, six ninety six making it for emergency vehicles only, it would cut off particular traffic, pedestrian traffic. Um, and and everything there, even the bike route would be uh, moved. Um, so with that being said, um, with their recommendation, we went to um, our city engineer, it was a Webster. Uh, he proposed a plan along with CIA to uh, essentially barricade the. Overpass off without actual physical barricades, meaning signs on. Lane uh, markers in the roadway in order essentially to block vehicles from going northbound and southbound over that intersection. Um, and obviously uh, putting signs up that say, you know, emergency vehicles only. Also, we'd have no pedestrian signs uh, and no bike uh, no bike route as well. Um, with all the pavement markings and the proper signage that that is required there and the permits. Uh, give the Webster approximates the uh, cost to blockade that overpass at fifteen thousand five seventy two. Um, with the fifteen percentage you see in there. Um, so you guys have been provided maps uh, and certain signage that was proposed in this. Uh, you guys have with your packets there and the thirty thousand foot view of what?
It's what, what the chief is proposing is a traffic control order. Which he can initiate that as the chief traffic engineer um, of the city. That would be a temporary ninety day closure, in order to make that a permanent closure, it requires council approval and a resolution of council, so. I think at least my understanding, because we we are, there's some. Verification that we're waiting on, unless he heard back today from uh, M dot over operational jurisdiction of over the roadway. Which we believe we have that ability and control, uh, but we're just waiting on confirmation. Which we believe we have that ability and control, but we're just waiting on confirmation from M.D. for that.
Yeah, it sounds like we do have operational patrol of the top side of that overpass. Where they maintain and obviously fix the bridge, we, any particular traffic over the top of it, we control.
I don't, how long do you think it'll take to hear from M.D.? Oh, they did, they already responded.
That's correct.
Have you guys looked at, oh, we need a motion first before we discuss that?
That's, yes.
I, I, oh, can I make a motion to table?
Second.
There's no discussion or motion to table?
Right, there is no discussion.
Okay.
You second it?
I feel like, um.
No discussion, either you second it or not.
I'm gonna say no.
I'll make a motion to. Approve the. The crossover closure.
Is there a second? Wait, wait, no one, nobody seconded it, so it died.
Oh, Galen took it, took his ban?
Yeah, just because I do want to have a conversation.
Okay.
Still need a second.
Second.
Move the second night, you have the discussion.
So, have you guys considered at all other solutions? Like, I mean, I, I know the number of crashes on the. Forgive me when I talk about this, because I always mix it up, but the westbound, like, the westbound side is, has got more than double the, the crashes. And I, I think, at least from what I've heard, you know, over the years, so a lot of that has to do with the fact that people crossing over can't see. Because the, the traffic, you know, backs up, from the light, the westbound traffic backs up. So they do the creep out thing and then they creep out too far, and the car coming is, you know, sixty miles an hour, you know, as the building flowing down to the highway and moving, they crack. It seems to me that, that one possible solution might be, you know, and when I've seen this in other areas. And I think we've actually, council has seen this, somebody brought us pictures about a year ago. But a, a kind of a buffer zone where you have the pavement marked, so, so there's no cars in that buffer zone. So, you know, cars would either, when they start stacking up, they would have to leave that space open. So then when people are crossing, you know, Letherton Boulevard and onto the overpass, they at least have the clearer view of what's coming and what's not coming. And I think that might potentially reduce accidents while still allowing, you know, the, the usage of the crossover. Because one, one concern I have is, okay, so if we close this off, are we just diverting the problem? So now, now are we gonna have cars that they're gonna speed, you know, a half a mile down, that's probably about a third of a mile. To get to the next turnaround and then they turn around, blow through the stop sign, speed back so that they can continue on north.
Or go down Letherton Boulevard, their side, because with more cut-through traffic.
Right, so, 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 so one of the concerns that I have is that we're, we're just kinda, it's like putting a speed bump in one spot. Diverting all the problem to another area. So that's, that's the one concern that I have and, you know, like I said, I've seen other areas where they do that buffer zone where it's striped and there's signs. Thing overhead on a wire that says. Don't block intersection, that kind of thing, so I, I don't know if that's another potential solution.
Certainly, certainly could look into it. I will say that the, the only thing is a vehicle traveling on eleven mile right there. There's three hundred feet between the off-ramp and Letherton Boulevard. So a vehicle traveling between sixty and seventy miles an hour is covering roughly about a hundred and five feet per second, which gives them about a three-second buffer. So while you leave them maybe a fifteen-foot gap, traveling at that rate of speed, no vehicle is gonna stop. You have three seconds from the, from the exit ramp all the way to Letherton Boulevard, so vehicles just don't stop that fast.
Is there a possibility to do it during certain times? Because I mean, I, I can see, it might be a good thing for residents, I don't know. But I can see residents on Letherton Boulevard being really inconvenienced, not being able to use that. And when it's, you know, not busy, you can easily get across there.
We look, so part of the traffic study was, we're looking at traffic data at certain times of the day. And while I would say, not a vast majority, but the majority of the crashes do occur during rush hour times. It's not staggering much more. No, so you, I mean, you, you might be at like fifty-five, sixty percent occur during rush hour. So it's not like, yeah, so if we did seven AM to nine.
But wait, how many accidents did you say?
Oh, we had forty-eight crashes there, eastbound and westbound over three hundred.
No, like, around four P.M.
Seems like a miracle for all the cars that go through there, I mean. Kind of like, is this a really drastic measure for, I mean, I, not that forty-eight crashes aren't terrible. Not saying that, but, I mean, I've seen people going up on the lawn on Letherton Boulevard there. Not having anything to do with the overpass, but just, you know, with people. In the merge lane and then deciding they didn't want to be there and then they go that way. So are, are any of those crashes counted in that, or it's just strictly on the bridge?
It's strictly any air, uh, crash that occurred at that intersection, what we consider eleven mile, like.
So it could be, it could be on eleven mile, not necessarily just on the bridge.
Right.
We got twenty thousand, almost twenty thousand, you have both on the eastbound, you figure forty-five percent, or maybe one turnaround, that's a lot.
Safety too, sometimes a bit of an. You know, safety, like the roundabouts.
Right.
Yes, traffic, you know, crashes might go up, but they're all minor, better, better, nobody's injured. That was one of the big reasoning behind roundabouts. I know everybody likes to talk about roundabouts in a negative way. But if you talk about from an injury standpoint alone, you know, the roundabouts, yes, very minor PDAs all the time. But nobody's hurt, nobody, everybody's going home, so.
What does PDA stand for?
No.
Thank you. I was like, that's a lot of public display of affection.
So does CIA look into any other options, or is they, or do they just give you a closure option?
That's, that's their recommendation.
But they, they have ways to look for other options. Do they have the resources?
I don't have to ask, but, I mean, this is what they do, they're traffic engineers, it's what they do for a living. And, and with the traffic crash data, they have the old one crash data, this is what they recommend.
But you specifically asked about that area.
That's correct, just due to the amount of crashes we were getting, even got a couple of our employees over the years.
How many are at Southfield and eleven mile?
I just think that it's moving, it's gonna be just moving the incidents down the street. To be at eleven mile and Southfield.
I mean, I would like to table it till we see what residents think. I mean, I don't know, I don't, over there, I don't know.
One of the bigger issues too is we had to put the, if you have remember the traffic controller for the no through traffic here at Sunnybrook. And a lot of the Letherton residents were complaining about through traffic. So we did a traffic control order to put those big no through traffic signs on Sunnybrook. Because we were, we, we had this traffic, traffic signs out and we saw how many vehicles, we, it was overwhelming. So actually, and the, the reason they were going there is to cut across that later Villa Door pass. While you say there might be more particular traffic, I think it actually will probably have the adverse effect. They'll probably stop everybody going through the neighborhoods because they can't get back out of that eleven mile shot, the six ninety-six.
And it's probably also, it's probably the same concept as the, the roundabouts with respect to, you know, injuries. Because, I mean, it, it's gonna divert the problem, but when you're going down further east.
Yeah.
And make that turnaround, you don't have cars coming off at sixty miles an hour. So, you know, if, if there are incidents, if there are the same number of incidents, they're probably gonna be less severe incidents.
So you have to go all the way down by into Southfield.
Going south, you would, you would make this overpass and back. If you're going north, yeah, you would have to go down. Or come up, yeah. Do they give?
With that one.
The directional data, was that part of their study? Yes, for northbound.
Oh, uh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, it does, it breaks it down.
It breaks it down, yeah, roughly nine-hundred and eighty-five vehicles northbound and six-hundred and twenty-eight southbound. I'm sorry, opposite, nine eighty-five south, six twenty-eight north.
Is there, is there a way we could like, see if they could? I know CIA may not come up with another option, but is there someone else we could reach out to, to see if they have like? Just another.
Tell you to build an overpass.
You doing for fifteen thousand?
Me, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Hawk signal down there.
I don't, I don't know what that, those charts are there.
I can see just making the traffic go elsewhere and causing more issues to be, you know, like, even with them. And I was there when there was an accident right there, so I, I understand. Because then here's the other issue that I foresee, because it happens to me, I take eleven mile every day now, and it's annoying. But, people come off of. Six ninety-six going east and don't realize that firing lane goes right back on six ninety-six.
I think you're talking about, oh, yeah, oh, oh, eastbound from everything getting up in the, yeah.
They don't realize you're going back on to six ninety-six, I'm going towards. Home, right, that's easy.
Yeah, yeah.
Going that way. Then they have to jump over at the last minute because they're getting back on the freeway. But now I feel like now you're gonna have that extra traffic that's coming from either the freeway or from Letherton coming back around. That's only gonna make it worse, you know what I'm saying?
There could be other, you know, other situations that come up.
Well, and Southfield and eleven is like one of the highest crash.
Yeah, I mean.
In the county, so we're definitely gonna be diverting more traffic there.
I just get afraid to approve it because I really think that we're just gonna be pushing our, the traffic accidents elsewhere.
It's not the greatest solution. I think it's just, it just lacks innovation.
Well, I don't know that, I mean, the.
I know, but I'm just saying, it's just like.
Went over there and was looking and it's like, I mean, the problem is, like you said, a three-hundred foot.
Right.
Coming at sixty.
Yeah, there's no, there's no real space, I mean.
Right, I mean, a light would be great, you can't.
Yeah, you can't, you can't, that's like, just gonna cause an accident, you can't get someone to stop.
Right.
Engineering mistake, I believe.
Right.
Yeah, it should have been pushed down further.
Like they have on the side of the road as you're exiting the ramp.
It's just a vibration, it's not, it's not something you're like, oh, let me slow down because I feel these. Like, you can feel that if you, I mean, I. I, I highly doubt that will.
I mean, I, I hate this idea, but I, I don't know that there's any other solution. I mean, that makes guy do this, this is their special.
Crosshatch stuff you guys talked about last year.
Well, that's how this came about, right?
Oh.
That led to, that led to this, but was that? Inter, I mean, was that, they, they just determined pedestrians shouldn't be crossing there at all, right?
Unless Scott Baker said, this doesn't have to be a permanent solution, we don't have to, you guys don't have to say that this is gonna be permanent moving forward. This can be a six-month, they recommend at least a six-month kind of study on this. Well, I know spending fifteen thousand dollars for a six-month survey is probably not a great topic for them tonight. But, um, this, obviously, the safety is a major issue. And this is with the lane markers and signs, it is reversible, you know, stat.
It's absolutely a thing.
For fifteen grand.
I would want resident input first.
So, um. What you can do is, uh, is there any more discussion on it? Any other questions?
Oh, I do have one quick question, only because I know that texting and driving thing is coming up in a few days. Was any of that an issue with these accidents, or did you not count those?
Um, as far as special circumstances, no, I mean, it's hard to prove. I mean, because nobody's gonna admit it when we talk to them in traffic practice, but no.
I mean, I saw drinking and not drinking and so a lot of things, but I didn't see phones or.
Yeah, usually it's, it's, it's distracted and none of them have been checked, so.
Because if it was distracted and now people can't have their phones, maybe we'll eliminate the problem altogether.
Yeah, I don't.
Any other questions? Hey, roll call.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
Roll call, Councilmember Jennings?
No.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor? Councilmember Canes?
No, not yet.
Councilmember Miller?
No, not yet.
Mayor Garrett?
Doesn't matter what I say, does it? So I can say no or yes or whatever, so I'll just go with the no.
Motion denied.
So, um, would they come back with some other alternatives or? Or are we just done?
I can certainly ask.
Yeah, I think that we have to look at some other options. One, put a sign on the southbound, south. West corner that says the second lane can't turn right.
Oh, yeah, that's.
That's where the other accidents are. And only because I'm not distracted is why I've never been hit, so. Damn close, though. Okay, this has been such a fun night, we're not done yet, let's keep going. Ordinance amendment, second reading, amending chapter eighteen articles. Cannabis businesses, no, that does not mean that we are taking applications if someone just dialed in.
So this is the second reading of the ordinance that was presented last month with respect to rein. Instituting the ban on cannabis businesses based on the voter initiative from the last election. There was one addition that was noted last time that's been included and that's to repeal the remainder of the cannabis ordinance section. Because these, there was only three sections here, the remaining. Twelve, I think we're taking out, so.
Okay.
If there's any questions on it, happy to answer them.
When you take a motion first.
My motion to approve the second building of amending chapter eighteen article six.
Is there a second? Move the second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Roll call, Mayor Pro Tim Cantor? Councilmember Canes? Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Great.
Going to affect in ten days?
It's, I mean, it's. Because there is, uh, well, because there's no mechanism for anybody to apply, there's never been a.
Okay.
Resolution approving the.
Fire EMS dispatch contract with the city of Southfield.
Okay, um, we have a contract before you tonight for an increase. The two-year period in each year is a five percent increase. And so, uh, that increases the sum for. This coming year's effective July one of this year to six-hundred and eighty-four thousand six-hundred twenty dollars and twenty-one cents. And then next year would be seven-hundred eighteen thousand eight-hundred fifty-one dollars and twenty-two cents. The other change in this is to, um, instead of a ninety-day written notice of termination. It was agreed upon for a hundred and eighty-day written notice of termination on either side. And additionally, um. I've asked in, in the contract that any increases or decreases. That you go before your respective councils, that we have any of that information in a new contract. When this one gets ready to expire, that the conversations are held before March first. So that it has time to be in the budget appropriations. And those are the changes. That are before you.
Anybody want to make a, um, motion?
We'll make a motion to approve the fire EMS disbest, dispatch contract with the city of South. We'll make a motion to approve, uh, by EMS disbest, dispatch contract with the city of Southfield.
It's been moved in second, um, any discussion?
Yeah, so one question I had was, um, it spells out the two years and then the option, the optional third year. But it doesn't show a fee or any, any, uh, discussion of what the cost is for the third year.
Yeah, so there was some, and so I'm not sure what you guys decided upon, but there was some discussion that they wanted to put that at the rate of inflation. Which we were opposed to because.
Fifty-eight percent.
Could be ten percent. Ten percent in three years. We don't know. So my conversation with the Southfield Attorney was, you give the option in there. But with it being undefined, it's gonna force the parties to come to an agreement on that. So it, it does, and the benefit to that. Um, is that there's certain performance requirements that they wanted as a part of this contract improvements to our water and fire hydrant system.
And those streets were listed out.
Yeah, and those were specifically identified, but the longer this contract, should something come up where we're not able to complete those within the two-year period. This gives us an additional year under this agreement to, to meet those identified objectives.
So the objectives have already been identified.
Yeah.
But they're not, I, I, I don't, I missed them, just not even.
No, they're in there. Uh, it is, I think. There goes seven. Uh, to improve water reliability, the city of the village will repair, replace water mains in the following streets during this contract period. Avila, um, Laker Boulevard to Dead End, Roseland, Laker Boulevard to Southfield, Redwood, Southfield to Dead End. And Catalpa, Laker Boulevard to Southfield.
Oh, wait a minute. I wanted to ask that question. Didn't we say that if we got money from, uh. The federal government, it was gonna be used for that. We, did we, we, did we get any of that grant money from Rashid's lead?
I have not heard something.
I mean, we saw pictures of them getting che, of people getting checks, so I'm assuming we did not.
Ours is not through the community foundation. They put it into a different. Different program through there, um, so. But these are those same streets that were identified as part of that program.
Right, so if we don't get that, then what happens?
We're still committed to doing those water mains as part of this.
Right, those, those are smaller sections of street. But it still increases flow on that side of the community.
That's right, we still didn't get that information.
What, I'm sorry, what did you say, Karen?
Hmm?
What did you say?
I said I, I didn't get that information about the water mains, um, on Santa Barbara and other stuff I asked for quite a while ago. It just reminded me, sorry, I was thinking out loud. Um, I don't have any more questions about this.
You do not use it?
I don't have any more answers about this.
One other question, um, on section three. And assume that if, if, you know, it's talking about if Southfield isn't available. Other equipment isn't available, it's actually, um, personnel. I mean, maybe they're out in another fire, multiple fires, you can't service us. I mean, what, what does Southfield do when they can't service themselves? I mean, do they?
Yeah, there's mutual aid.
Mutual aids.
Mutual aid, so that would, that would, in effect, take place here.
Right.
Um.
But it's, it's just basically saying mutually. That's actually.
And just FYI, this also expires in four days, right? Right, any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Roll call, Councilmember Canes?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yes.
Motion carry.
Tower lease amendment proposal.
Hey, uh, I've had, um, conversation with. Our alliance or American Tower. Um, that they would like to amend the current lease agreement that we have with them. Um, the city owns the property that the tower sits on, uh, but we do not own the tower. So the amendments that they are asking, um, and these are things that will help with marketing and that kind of thing, um. They're asking to add the right of first refusal, so if the city does decide to sell it, they would be able to, um. Have first dibs on it and, um, give American Tower the mechanism to match. Uh, if we accept an offer to buy the lease from one of the aggregators, um. The second is the removal of the formal requirement to secure the city's consent for subtenant. This is the marketing aspect of that. If they have to come to the city each time to get approval, um, for somebody that wants to place, uh. Times cellular device on, um, an antenna on the tower. Um, it, it's not something that is easily marketable for them, so they're looking for ways to, uh, increase their marketing ability. They want to add three five-year term options to the agreement and they want to change the CPI escalator to a fixed escalation of, oh, it has zero percent. Uh, three percent is what that should say there. I apologize if that's not there. In addition to that, um, if council does approve this, there's a one-time signing bonus that they would pay the city, uh, ten thousand dollars as well as matching payments. For any new tenants that they match, uh, current co-locators, which I believe is one thousand.
Thirteen hundred something, yeah.
Yeah, it's a little under twelve hundred bucks per. Antenna this up there. And if council, this is the first step, uh, towards, uh, getting the actual amendment. They will draft that, which will then go to staff for approval, um, for council to sign in the future, but they wanted to know. Whether council was amenable to this before drafting any of that language.
Motion to approve the suggested amendments to the tower lease agreement and authorize.
I'm sorry.
Authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign the amendment document after review by the city attorney.
I'll second.
Been moved in seconds. There any discussion?
Yeah, I got a few things.
Why are we doing this again?
Well, they, 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 they send these things.
Yeah, every day, exactly. And it's not even American Tower.
So the, so the first, the, the, the first one had a right of first refusal, um, I, I, I guess I don't have a huge problem with, you know, unless the city attorney has an issue. Because I mean, that, that, that's, you know, if we make an offer with somebody like Tower Point who, who, you know, hit us about a year ago with, with a, with a lucrative offer. Um, they would have the rights to match that, so we wouldn't lose anything there.
Correct.
The second one, the removal of the formal requirement, the only thing that worries me about that is that if they don't come for us to consent, then how do we know that somebody's on the.
Right. And I think we've actually had that issue.
We have.
Why we put it in there.
Right. Right. The, the, the three, five-year terms, I mean, I think that's, that's fine because that gives them the stability that they want to be able to attract more business.
Into two thousand fifty, something.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're going through twenty forty-three right now.
Yeah. Yeah, but then the, the, I can tell you that the changing the CPI escalator to fix three percent escalation, if you remember, they, they wanted to, uh, change our, 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 um. Or they were looking for not the co-locator, the escalation. The, yeah, the term escalation, um, they wanted in their last, one of their last offers, they wanted it to go from twenty-five percent to ten percent. Which is basically the contract says that, you know, it's, it's a maximum, it's CPI, the maximum of five percent per year additive for each of the five prior years. Uh, so maximum could be five percent. They wanted to bring it down to ten percent and we said, we said no. And the reason why they're doing this now, while they're making that offer is because if you look at the, the CPI, um. You know, it typically averages over the last, last decade, it averages a little over two percent. And if you look at the last five years, if you add the five, you know, it's five point eight percent, uh, in twenty twenty-three, eight percent in twenty twenty-two, four point seven in twenty twenty-one. You add those five up, it's, it's almost twenty-one percent.
Yeah.
So when this term expires, they're gonna be on the hook for twenty, for a twenty-one percent increase in that twelve, thirteen hundred dollar payment a month, whatever it is, and they don't want to do it.
Yeah.
So they're trying to, you know, whittle us down by saying, hey, let's just do a three percent escalation, which I have to, we do not agree with. Don't not make up for the signing bonus. And lost revenue in perpetuity.
Any other discussions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Roll call, Councilmember Miller?
No.
Mayor Garrett?
No.
Councilmember Jennings?
No.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
No.
Councilmember Canes?
No.
Motion denied.
Next is the personnel manual amendment.
We're tabling that.
Gotta make a motion for it.
Can't remember, will we taking it all out or we?
We were.
Yeah, we were table.
Doing the, um. Yep.
All right, so I'll, I'll make a motion to, um. Uh, update the personnel, uh, personnel manual, uh, manual, uh, section five point oh three C. To the wording listed in the packet, which is on page, somebody help.
Three sixteen.
What is it?
Three sixteen. Oh, wait. Yeah, three sixteen.
It's just state that, uh, oh, and making this effective, uh, July first of twenty twenty-three. Uh, the employees shall not be allowed to bank, none of that, I felt like they're something, that's a very times. That's the third time should be used prior to the gate.
There's a second.
There's, yeah, but then there's also for approved overtime work done outside of normal job duties that needs to be added. And B, did you say B?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. And then in five oh three B, um, on the third sentence after overtime work, adding the words gone outside of normal job, job duties.
Sir, second. Second. It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? So what was, uh, what was waiting for, for the section fourteen oh two B? I'm sorry, I forgot.
The attorney.
Oh. That's my.
Probably need to add Medicare in there.
Oh, does anyone else have any other questions? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Roll call, Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yeah.
Councilmember Canes? Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Motion carry.
Next up is the employment agreement amendment for Scott McKee.
Tabling that awesome. Make a motion. Make a motion to table H, employment agreement amendment for Scott McKee.
Uh, roll call.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yeah.
Councilmember Canes? Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Motion carry.
And when would we be able to talk to Steve? That's not until our next. Meeting or?
What is the date of our next meeting? Is it July time?
Yes.
I don't know.
We have a study session for July third and then.
For the holiday or what?
That was in the budget, the, the calendar you guys approved.
Do we need to table that?
There's lack of business.
Yeah, I think we do. Oh, there's, okay. Obviously, we weren't paying attention to that one. Seventeenth.
Seventeenth is your next regular meeting.
Unless we switch a word, it'll be the tenth and the twenty. Bit. Hey, we'll talk about that in a minute. So when will we, will we, um, be able to talk to Steve?
I bet I can reach out and find out what seventeen is available.
Well, neither of the, of these are Scott's contract goes till twenty twenty-five. I, he has six months, so, I don't know, I guess.
Oh, so sorry. Okay, so the other, but we were also wanting to talk about the, uh, other portion of the, um. Or PM.
Yeah, but again, that's.
So twenty twenty-five.
I mean, maybe we can.
No, that's.
If we decide.
Six months.
Which if, uh, you could invite him to the study session, if you're gonna have a study session on the tenth, perhaps, um. Or for the study session on the seventeenth and then. Or we could, I could ask him to issue a legal opinion, whatever you want.
That's just curious.
Which one's cheaper?
Probably have him here.
Um, next we have the RAP two point oh revitalization of pla, placemaking grant resolution of support.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, I am here for you this evening, uh, to request a resolution of support for. A combined application from the DDA and city for the RAP two point oh grant, which is the revitalization and placemaking grant. Um, that is being, uh, offered through the state of Michigan. Uh, we are, uh, it's been working with Oakland County, um, and eleven other, uh, Oakland County communities. On, uh, their regional proposal, uh, to implement a variety of street or, uh, placemaking projects within Oakland County. Uh, for Oakland County allows this to, or, uh, take advantage of matching funds that the county has available, um. Their matching portion, uh, would roughly be a hundred and eighty-five thousand, um. But, uh, and then the matching funds that we will be requesting, um, I'm getting ahead of myself. I'm sorry. Been long, as we all know, um, so our proposed project is to renovate municipal park. Um, this would include a brand-new, uh, play structure, uh, fully accessible. Um, and done with the universal design principles that are the current, um, accessible, accessible standards. I, we would also be reconstructing the entire parking lot. And we would be re-landscaping the flower beds on the east side of City Hall, so this time, in City Hall. Um, the estimated cost, total cost for these, uh, would be eight thousand three. Yeah, it, it, the, eight hundred thirty-eight thousand and some change. Um, I know I have it written down here. And I know that that amount is slightly different than, um, what was in the, the resolution that was in your packet. Um, I got an updated landscaping proposal this afternoon and, and made that adjustment, so I apologize if there's. Uh, that's incorrect, but so the total estimate is eight hundred thirty-eight thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars. Um, the RAP grant is possible, would give us, uh, would cover half of that match. Because that Oakland County would be, um, taking about a hundred and eighty-five thousand, a hundred and seventy of the city. To city and DDA to come up with the remaining matches, which is approximately two hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. Um, the DDA has committed a hundred thousand dollars, uh, to this project. Uh, we're respectfully requesting that the city council consider, uh, contributing a hundred thousand dollars as well. Um, and then the remaining, the remaining, uh, matching funds would be secured through crowdfunding and, um, seeking additional grant fund. So, uh, the grant is due, the, uh. Well, um, our materials are due to the county, um, Thursday. So they can finish their preparation for the application that I.
Thank you, um, motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, resolution of support for, uh, re, re, the RAP two point oh revitalization of placemaking grant.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion?
Question, so the, um, if we were to get the grant, the, um, what would happen with the existing, um. Play equipment, would we move that to other parks or would it be scrapped?
Isn't that.
We've not actually, uh, I haven't determined exactly what would happen, um, I suppose we could repurpose that. Um, into other, into other parks. I know that certainly they could use.
I don't.
TLC as well.
I don't know that we can.
But I don't know if it.
I think, and any new installations have to meet ADA requirements, and if our stuff isn't ADA, ADA compliant. We, we remember we ran into this when we were trying to donate our old equipment for the last park upgrade and nobody would even take it for donation.
And our, and our current condition is, is actually, I mean, it, it looks okay, um, but there are certainly spots that are, are rusting out. They do not meet the, um, the current ADA standards, so I'm not, I, yeah, I don't. Obviously, I'm gonna defer it, try to acroby, I don't think that that's necessarily the best.
Yeah, and then the other, the other, I guess it's not a question, it's more of a comment, but, um, I know the paving of the parking lot is, has been on our list. Capital improvement list, you know, for a long time, and if I remember correctly, you can probably, I'd be able to, you can probably correct me, but I thought it was somewhere around eighty thousand for the.
That's just to re, I think that was, uh, numbers from, um, maybe a year, a year and a half.
Um, maybe a year, a year and a half ago was a, and that's just to do a very light mill.
Right.
Overlay. This would be fully reconstructing the parking lot. Um, repairing all of those crumbling. Curves, um, making sure that the ADA ramps are. In place, at the appropriate um, angle. So this would be a fair and major overhaul.
Right. So essentially, essentially, what, what we'd be doing is the, the investment that we would. That we're gonna need to make sometime in the, in the near future anyways. Would be buying us a completely new landscape, new playscape and a much, much more, a much, much more better. A much more better improved parking lot than, than what we would have just by doing a mill and fill.
Yes, I, and I think that overall this project really, I mean. Gives us a lot of bang for our, for matching box.
Right.
Well, yeah.
How much is being spent on the re-landscaping? Who did that plan?
And the, the estimate right now is uh, twenty-nine thousand dollars and some change. Um, Gipfels Wester as part of their routine or cost uh. Put that, put that thing together for.
Any other questions? Isn't that something residents could, like, we have master gardeners and everything here. I don't get it, but okay.
I mean, we could certainly um, have the master gardeners. Uh, you know, contribute. I, I would love to have them contribute to this. Uh, we do have, um, I think having. The uh, the plan prepared um, by a firm. Uh, goes pretty far at helping us uh, secure points. Um, but I would, you know, I, I, I thought that it would be great to have. The master gardeners help us plan what those.
Right, what should look, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, I really agree. So I mean, I just. Just because the application doesn't mean I, um, there's not opportunities for more involvement.
I understand. Any um, further questions?
One, so what's the final cost to the city?
Uh, the final, the fine, total cost um. For the match for the city. DDA and, and the crowdfunding amount would be approximately two hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars.
And how does that crowdfunding work?
Uh, so that is, we uh, the DDA used Patronity. Um, which is a crowdfunding platform um, in state. That uh, we can set it up kind of. However, we want, there's some different crowdfunding platforms that they, you know, if you, if you, you set your goal, right, our goal is gonna be eighty, eighty-two thousand dollars. Um, set your goal. Um, if you, you know, you can, if you meet. Certain thresholds, we can, you know, get it all. We can, say if we don't meet our goal, might not attract you. It really depends on how we set it up. I mean, I would like to see it be, we match our money and, and get, you know, residents and business. Community involved in making this match happen. And both happens, we could do it. And we made a, met our goal the last time. We did our crowdfunding campaign. Um, it'll take a lot of hustle, but. I think between uh, this board and the DDA and our other active residents, I think we can make it happen.
So you have used crowdfunding before?
Yeah.
For what?
Uh, we did that uh, also in partnerships with Main Street Oakland County uh, for the lovingly, the multiple, lovingly Village mini. Mini grants.
Oh, man.
Yeah, the COVID mini grants. So, um. They're far more modest, but they're successful, and I think we can do it.
Um, it says, says a hundred thousand dollars of funds from the American Recovery Program. I thought we, I thought that money was already spent.
I know we had a, a portion of it and I had, I mean, this is. It, I think, really, it should have been general funds, perhaps is a better way I should have put it. Um. I know that we had, it was approximately four hundred thousand. Not sure. Uh, I know we have not sent all of that. But I, I truly don't know the exact amount, but I know there's other competing priorities. And so you don't wanna take it off.
So. We give a hundred thousand dollars from wherever.
Okay, yes.
Okay.
Yes, please.
Okay. Any other um, questions? Hearing none, roll call please.
Roll call, councilmember Canes.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you. Let's stay there.
Yeah.
Um, so next is the DDA Board of Director appointments.
So we have, we currently have uh, one vacancy. Um, that's been. Been vacant for a while. Um, and uh. Uh, so it desperately needs to be filled. Um, one of our newer businesses, uh, Ambassador Institute, uh, Dr. Trish Felton has expressed an interest. In joining the board and um, continuing the DDA's great work. Um, and so I would like to remember mention her, so the seat, um, it was previously occupied, uh, Mark Quat. Um, when uh, he resigned uh, that, that fall. Uh, also, the. The upcoming um, departure of Matt Nagro, um, I would like to. Propose that she can be reappointed and so a permanent city manager. And um, once again, take that seat.
Did you talk to Scott?
I did. I asked, I didn't know, there, um, in that capacity, he did, he did agree.
Okay.
All right. Anyone wanna make a motion?
I'm looking to appoint uh, Scott McKee to uh, the DDA board. Uh, in the interim term until a new city administrator is, is uh, hired.
Nervous when you looked at me and said Scott.
Yeah.
And?
Probably do it one at a time.
Okay.
Motion for each candidate.
Action. Okay.
Alright.
There a second?
Second.
We moved a second. Was there any discussion?
Yes, is that, now, the makeup of the DDA board, does it specify that the city administrator is supposed to be on, on it? Or that's just something that was done?
Uh, that's something that's done. The law stipulates that fifty-one percent of the board must be each of. Individuals that either own property or operate businesses within the uh, DDA.
Right.
So it, it's from practice. That. That seat is unfilled by the city.
And they're considered a business? Her owner.
The city owns property within.
Yeah, but that's. I, that's questionable. And then also, was this, was this opening posted?
Yep.
Where was it posted and how did you solicit people and?
I, it, it, no, it's been a while. Um, but it was, I know it was in the E News Center. Uh, a couple of times. It was also in a news, uh, DDA specific newsletter. We do have our, our own newsletter that goes out that business community.
Oh, you do?
Yeah.
Can we get that?
Sure.
Okay.
Um. And then, I, I mean, this is just something, it, it is something that I bring out to. My businesses when I talk to them, hey, if you're ever interested in, in joining the board, um, whether it's on a committee or something. Becoming involved in the DDA, like we have the, uh, committee or, you know, join the board if you so desire and. And Dr. Felton was very excited.
Do we have um. Do we have any people on the committee that actually own a building? In the business district or is it just people renting space?
We have um.
Used to. I know we have Dion Salves from Michigan First.
Yeah, and, yes, we do have property owners. They're on, they're on board.
Who?
Uh, uh, Charlotte Jones, a property owner. She owns.
Oh, the church, yeah.
Yep, the church, up on twelve mile. Um, we do have um.
You have a representative from Michigan First and Michigan First owns there.
Yeah. Michigan. Yeah, I said, I said that first, yeah.
Yeah. Um.
Bobby?
No.
Bobby, uh, Bobby is not, she, she works for um.
Good, okay.
Wallace, Penner, and Tom.
We've got a couple.
Any other questions? Hearing none, roll call please.
Roll call. Councilmember Miller.
No.
Uh, Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor. Councilmember Canes.
Which appointment is this, the first?
This is from Chief McKee.
Motion carry.
Thank you.
Alright, I'll make a motion to appoint uh, Trish Felton to the DDA uh. Board of Directors uh, with a term ending February fourth, February first, twenty twenty-seven.
There's a second.
Second.
It's been moved in seconds. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yeah.
Councilmember Canes. Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you. Next, we have the appointment to Sakura.
Okay, um, with my departure, um, you will need to appoint a new representative. Um, the deck is the alternate. And I didn't have. Input on who the. The representative should be, so that's blank in the uh. The note that is there um. In the resolution, both of those would have to be filled out, but uh. To add that name for who you want to have as the representative.
Is there a suggestion as someone or?
We're going to nominate Karen Miller since she filled it in prior decisions.
That was Sakura.
Yes.
You did Sakura.
Well, they're both on the same day.
Same day, I think she did.
One right after the other, so.
Okay, if someone makes a motion. You wanna make the motion for Karen?
Uh, I make the motion to appoint Karen as the, said Sakura.
Sakura.
Sakura, representative. With Suzie being the alternate.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yes.
Councilmember Canes.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you. Um, the next one is for Sakura.
Sakura, it's the Water of Gordy, and it's the same thing. So, that's before you. The name needs to be added Suzie as the alternate.
Karen, would you want to involve?
Sure.
Second, I mean, motion to appoint, um, motion to appoint Karen Miller to Sock, as the Sakura representative and Suzie Steck as the alternative. This school year ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four.
It moved in second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
Yeah.
Councilmember Canes. Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Motion carry.
Thank you. Um, and I see that some things in here that's not, okay, wait a minute. The website update recommendation?
This was something that I had suggested waited until next month, um, and a third um. Quote could be obtained, uh. Even to no avail, uh, a quote from Civic Plus because we use Munich Code, um, and they operate Munich Code. Would be a natural.
You don't have it.
Third quote to obtain, um. Meetings were set. They didn't show, um, they were questioned at uh, the Clerks Conference, uh, that Kella went to, um. At one of the vendor uh. Tables that they had and. It was just, oh, well, that's too bad that they didn't respond. So, um, there are two suggestions in front of you. Uh, Apogee was one that came before.
I don't have, we don't have.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, it's not on the agenda. I just happened to, because I'm pulling it off the Munich Code, but nobody here has.
We don't have it.
So how do you want to proceed? You want me to read to you? These were things that were in packet back in May, the information that you had. Um, this is from Apogee. There is a sixty-five hundred dollar annual fee. Uh, plus a sixty-two hundred dollar for all the services in their proposal. Um, annual rate is locked in with no more than a possible five percent increase per year. After G services around thirty-six hundred clients, mostly in school districts. They currently have around forty municipalities they serve. Apogee has been in business for eight years and they have a ninety-nine percent retention rate. Uh, the annual fee for the current website that we have uh, is revised and they gave an à la carte fee. Um, but to add the same services would be a lot more expensive than uh, what Apogee is offering. Um, the MEDC has given a grant to uh, the city through the redevelopment ready communities program. Of uh, twenty-five thousand dollars to redesign its current website. The goal is to have a user-friendly website where residents can easily find information. And staff's recommendation is to uh, select Apogee to do the website update. So, um, this is information that hasn't changed uh, from what you previously had. And council can determine how they want to proceed on this.
I'd like to table it till it's on the agenda. We make a motion. Make a motion to table this till it's on the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Canes.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Mayor Garrett.
Yes.
Councilmember Jennings.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor.
No.
Motion carry.
Um. What's the next thing? Let's show.
City administration group.
I'm just looking through here because the Apogee was not on the agenda either, so I just wanted to make sure there was nothing else. So. My goodness. I'm going to take the chance of city administrator report.
Only have a couple of things. Um, the treasurer's job has been posted. Pam uh, submitted her. Intent to retire at the end of this year. Um, so that job has been posted. It will be open until. July twentieth. And uh, we held interviews for the new or the vacant code enforcement officer building clerk position. Um, and out of those that were interviewed, a conditional job. Uh, conditional offer was higher, extended to Rob Harris. And he has accepted that conditional offer and will be joining the city as the new code enforcement officer on July seventeen.
Can you bring it to the meeting?
I just have a question on uh, the July third meeting. Is that? Something you guys are going to have or postpone uh, for the study session?
So, um, before we go to that. You had a question?
Um, yes, I said, can he come to the meeting to, if we're meeting on the seventeenth, can he come to the meeting to meet? Uh, council and residents?
Um, I think he will be fully immersed into the community and my recommendation is that council comes into the office to meet new staff.
Okay, doesn't every resident needs to come into the office then too? I'm sorry, it, it used to be, it used to be that people, new employees, new staff members were brought to council meetings and introduced to the community and to council. So I'm not sure why, why that um. Has it continued, but, okay.
I like that idea.
So I mean, if it's possible, if we can ask um, him and Martha to come to a meeting. Um, because that is past pack, practice. So, all of the um. Residents can also be able to introduce and put a face with the, with the name, if possible.
And it doesn't have to be that day, but.
Why are we entertaining this? Can we?
And I was asking a question, I was asking a question.
Yeah.
I can ask them. Um, then then what was your next question?
The July third meeting. The study session. Are you changing dates in July or keeping that or canceling that?
Totally up, uh, to council.
I was looking back a week.
I'm on board.
Same here.
The study session to the seventeenth?
That would be the study session and then, uh, twenty-four would be the.
Yeah.
Alright.
I would just remind you that you will, you still do need to find and appoint an interim manager. The longer you put off the regular meeting, the longer that delays that.
We can do a special meeting on the ten. They've all been special.
Good idea.
Special meeting on the ten?
But if you have candidates, I think you might want to talk about how you're going to find candidates first and then I would, I would suggest leaving the studies, the tenth of the study session, but possibly always leaving the seventeenth as a regular meeting.
Yes, that's a great idea.
Yeah, okay, yeah, it happened the seventeenth.
So someone can make a, uh, motion.
I'll make a motion to move the, uh, uh, study session from, uh, July third to July tenth. And do this right on just the other part of the list.
Second.
We'll move in second, is there any discussion?
And then we're moving the other one?
Um.
I see, we may have to add it for me.
I would say just leave the, you said leave the tenth, leave the seventeenth.
Okay.
And then, um, maybe just leave it open for the twenty-fourth, right? Is that correct? Okay, um, roll call please.
Roll call, council member Canes?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Mayor Garrett?
Yes.
Mayor, council member Jennings?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Cantor?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Um, city attorney?
Nothing for me.
Um, Parks and Rec Commission?
Um, the event for the thirtieth is postponed until further notice, probably the fall. And then I just wanted to say that the government too is absolutely phenomenal and help everybody gets cancer time together. Um, we give everybody a congratulatory.
Thank you, Simcut.
I do not have a report.
South of public schools?
Nope.
Planning Commission?
Yeah, so the last, uh, planning, uh, planning commission meeting, uh, we discussed, um, whether or not a laundry mat, laundry mat, uh, should be allowed in the, in the mixed use district. Uh, and if so, whether it's, uh, similar to existing, uh, existing permitted uses or whether or not required additional tax amendments because of the type of business that it is. There was a little bit of, uh, disagreement on the, on the commission. I think there were, uh, two who wanted to treat it as a, uh, uh, as an existing permitted use and then the remainder, uh, had concerns about the parking because it's the type of business that, uh, typically does. People who park in state for a few hours, so we were concerned about the, whether or should be additional parking, um, associated with that. So, um, the resolution was that we ask people in Webster to put together potential, uh, uh, tax amendment language for us to review at our next meeting.
Thank you. Unfinished new business? Public comments. Speakers unlimited to three minutes. Is there anyone that would like to be heard? Come to the desk or raise your hand on Zoom.
Hi, um, Laura Barris, President. Um, there were some tough talks tonight. Um, I want to thank Sue for hanging in there and continuing, continuing to plead her case for the city staff, even though she's on her way out. Um, I really appreciate that. And thanks to Scott for pushing council to make a decision tonight. This is not the first time you've done that and, um, it, it pushed everybody to really stay and make that decision. Um, thank you to the four members of council for passing the budget and continuing for the services for the residents. Um, I know that that was hard and I really appreciate you doing that. Um, I have used the eleven mile and late trip, um, cut through and I've experienced how dangerous that is. So I want to, um, thank Lieutenant Zane too for bringing a great solution, uh, to the council. Um, I'm all about safety and, um, I'm sure we all can adapt to that change. And I really hope that council will see the ultimate benefit of that, of that. Um, I had a question of, do any of the five council members have suggestion for the right process to select both an interim city administrator and a permanent city administrator? It sounds like you have, um, selected an interim city administrator. Um, but I'm wondering how you go about, um, selecting, I mean.
We've selected interim?
Oh, did, wasn't that what you did tonight? What's the left, okay, I thought that you did. So, okay, so I'd like to know how you, uh, when the right processes to select both an interim city administrator and a permanent city administrator. I thought that you had selected a interim with, um, Scott. So I'd like to know that.
Thank you. You're welcome. Is there anyone else that would like to be heard?
First, Lori, can you just personally, I was in trouble with, um, getting answers of the city. Of my Miss Big request, I was, um, not answered by the city and I had to call. And they were the only ones who didn't sign up on my mistake and I had to have them do it again when I came. Nobody could do it, but Kelda said she'd do it. And she did, thank you. And then, um, most recently, um, oh, I received a water bill that I, they said was past due and when I went to pay it, they couldn't, they couldn't help me at the counter. Jacqueline couldn't work the computer to look it up. She had to get, you know, um, and luckily she was there, but if she wasn't, I couldn't have gotten service. And those are just a couple of examples, something, couple of communication.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Hearing none. Mayor and council comments to answer your question about the interim, um, city manager. We were given, um, a list of all the interim, um, people that are available. And the goal is for everyone on council to pick their three and for them to be called to see if they're still available. And then they would, we would do an interview for the interim. Um, I have been in contact with, uh, the MML for the permanent city manager. Um, we actually just have to have a meeting. I explained already all of the concerns, um, from council. Have to have a meeting, I said that. And we do have a one-year wrong words warranty, but we have one-year, um, guarantees, sorry, not guarantee. That, of course, they have to honor. And so we have to also make a, um, get a meeting together for that also to meet with them. Um, hopefully we will do the interim, uh, as soon as possible. Um, I personally was thinking that it'll be paid for a minute, but I think that that's overkill, so we'll get to that. It's, right? So, um, one thing also, I forgot to say, when was there Kelda for the fire contract? Unless you want the fire contract to be voided, can you, please put my legal name on there? Thank you, best for that one. And then the other thing is the reason why I was late is because they were honoring, um, the former city council member woman, sorry, um, Barbara Tally, who was the first elected to Southfield City Council in nineteen eighty-three. And, um, which the reason why I was there is one, she was the first African-American elected to Southfield City Council. Got to tell you that too. Um, and what the irony was, is that I met her in nineteen eighty-two and I was forced to work on her campaign at a very young age, because that's what my parents did at that time, to make sure I was involved. So it was really, really good to be there, major turnout for that. Um, and then, which I just found out tonight, that, uh, the former Southfield Mayor, Don Procoski, Procosky passed away and his funeral is June twenty-eighth and it'll be at Sullivan's on Twelve Mile in Berkeley. And the funeral is at Highland Park Baptist Church, which is on Loser and eleven mile, I think. To. Okay.
Twelve mile.
Well, sorry, eleven and, okay. Um, and y'all, uh, for memorials and things like that to go to the Southfield good fellows. Um, and, oh, I'm glad it's right here. And then, um, Susan from Moms Demand asked for gun sense. Um, send an email saying thank you belatedly for Lathr Village's participation on where orange proclamation again this year. I always feel welcome at the Lathr Village council meetings and know that the council members are in complete agreement with our campaign to raise awareness of this important use. Please convey my thanks to all members. And that's all that I have. Anyone else?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to echo Barb's comments about the garden, the garden tour, which was fantastic. Um, it was actually my first time, but there were some just absolutely amazing gardens and it raised, uh, you know, a lot of money for, for, uh, planting trees in the, in the fall, so that's, so that's great. And the other thing that was, that was actually, at first I was a little worried about it was the fact that the garage sale was the same weekend, but that actually turned out to be a good thing because we were driving from, you know, one, one garden to another. We were stopping at, at Garage Tales, so that, uh, actually worked, worked out well. Um, I also want to thank Susie for the, uh, for the RAP two-point-o grant because I know she has been working like crazy to get that, get that done in light of a lot of other things going on. Um, so that looks like a great opportunity and we really appreciate them taking the time, time to do that. Um, and then just a few questions. Um, Scott, anything on the Attorney General case, have they done anything on that?
I reached out to them, they were supposed to have their investigator contacting me and then.
And then, a- again, just some of the more major things, I know we're kind of going to be transitioning to probably an interim, 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 but it could be any progress on that. The fact that I'm at least trying to get that started or in place.
That, that is in progress right now. Um, Martha has been working on that in addition to Pam.
Okay, and then, and then I had it on my list that we talked about a little bit in the study session in terms of, uh, uh, the, uh, marketing plan for, uh, water line identification. I mean, is there anything going on with that? Um, and then the last two, anything with the Sakura meter and then.
No, I haven't heard anything further on that, so, no.
And then, and then I know I think at the last meeting you said that with the water tech, that we were trying to work out some stuff on the power. Any others?
Yep, um, they're asking about a third location, um, which in looking at the property, I don't know where we would put a third tower. Um, the city doesn't have property that, we have property, it's just not in the location where they would need that third tower at. So I don't know if that would be something, as I was driving today, um, I noticed that there are some towers right on the outskirts of our city and maybe I would believe that's in Southfield, um, working with Southfield to be able to put something there would be my suggestion because there's, there's no place else to put it, um, to be able to get, uh, south of six ninety-six, um, accurately those readings, so.
So that raises the price for adding a third, right?
Well, that's a great.
Does it?
It, I mean, we, we, we knew all along that there was, I mean, if you read the recommendation, there, there, there was.
Well, so we may have to.
Yeah, but there, there's given that we are not updated on the versions, we have version two, we're not on the version for transmitters, you know, we do the three, three, which is going to be required to get the.
Didn't, it's, it, recommendation didn't say that, says maybe. So did we approve the amount to cover the three?
Yeah.
So anyone else?
Yeah, I'll go, move quick. Um, I just wanted to thank everyone who came out to the Juneteenth event. Uh, it was a great time. Um, thank you, Susie, for, you know, doing what you do. Um, thank you to the DDA too, you guys put that together, so thank you. Um, and then I think that's it. Um. Oh, and then, I know it was rough, but I'm glad we kind of came to a consensus about the budget and then, um, that's all, looking forward to our discussion about the interim, um, manager. That's it.
Thank you, anyone else?
Yep, I would like to send my regards to Barbara Tally. I too was supposed to go to the event. I worked with her for many years, um, but we got a packet edition at three o'clock of fourteen pages. And so I stayed home and went through that to prepare for the meeting. So anyway, I'm glad that it went well and she definitely deserves it. She's given, uh, so many contributions to the community. Um, also, I am still waiting on the water maintenance information that I asked for two meetings ago. That's it.
Or anything? I don't know, you're a factor. Long pastor. I get it, but, um, motion to, I would say monkey to the breast, what is that? Oh, I know, is there a second? Thank you. Okay, your turn, thank you for hanging in there.